You lost your gavel? I don't have my pen.
Oh, I probably didn't pull it out.
Mayor has no gavel.
Oh, my gosh. And I have no pen.
Do you want a pen? Here's a pen. You have a pen?
I got one pen.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no pen. I got candy.
Yes. I saw. It's Villa Park. It's California.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared Lee, please do the roll call.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Here.
Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Polly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Present.
Marys?
Here, thank you so much. We are going to do the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask Dennis Couli, our city councilman, to stand up and lead us, please.
My right hand over the heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Oh, well, Mayor Pro Tem Barnett was just bringing up in private talk that the timing of when we say the pledge of allegiance, the timing is different sometimes how different people say it. So, I've got to think about this. The actual proper way to say it is, I've got to think about it before I say it. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the proper way. It's, geez, why am I drawing a blank? It's "In God We Trust." It's one sentence, not two.
There's one where rotary is the same.
One nation under God.
Rotary, no, rotary does it right.
It was all consistent, and then one day, somebody brought it up, and some people changed, and others didn't, and it's never been totally consistent, and now it's happening.
All right.
And yet, if you go to a military event, they will always do the, you know, they will always have a pause. They do a cadence. It's in cadence. It depends on where you are.
Yeah. Oh, well, anyways. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and/or turn them off if possible. Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to speak on an item contained on the agenda, please approach the podium at the time the item is being considered. After I recognize you, state your name and address for the record prior to providing your comments. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes in most cases. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please do so during the time listed for oral communications. Our first presentation tonight will be an update from the Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Bender. I live at 18262 Evergreen Circle, proud citizen of Villa Park. Thank you so much for your continued support of the foundation, and we're proud to be here today to just share a few things with you about what we're doing. First of all, the foundation had a great, successful summer with its sponsorship of two, count them, two, not one, movie nights that were very well attended. And I have to say that, at least from my perspective, all recognition goes to Andy Mills for the work that she did. I went out one of those two nights sort of by myself. I was supposed to be escorted by one of my grandkids. But it turned out to be a great evening, great community response, and of course, due to continued interest on the part of the community, we're going to try to continue to keep this moving. So, look out 2013. In our continuing efforts to be more effective and organized in our work, we are having a formal financial audit conducted by the city, by the foundation, by an independent CPA firm. And we'll be providing the city council and the community with the results of that audit as soon as it is completed. Now, I particularly want to recognize Bill Nelson, who is our treasurer, for the incredible work that he's been doing as well. In addition to the audit, Bill has implemented routine evaluations, financial evaluations, and reviews of our expenditures and our books. I think in that particular capacity, maybe it's safe to say that Dennis Couli is probably a true utility man because he's one of those folks that we rely upon to help us with this. So, we really appreciate that. And we just want to make sure that we're doing the right things when it comes to fiscal responsibility and that we're doing things right, not just the right things, but things right. I also want to recognize Rondi Walsh and some work that she's doing. She's past chair of the foundation, and she's been shepherding our efforts to try to make sure that we have proper insurance coverage for the foundation. This involves actually quite a bit of work and quite a bit of time on her part to make sure that we've got the right coverage in place. So, we just want to extend our thanks to Rondi for that work. The Community Services Foundation, just in the last week, sponsored a community seminar on eye care last Thursday, and the event was coordinated by Andy Mills again, and it was very well attended. So, we're also grateful to St. Joseph's Hospital for their ongoing support of our community wellness activities. Oh, and it's that time of year again. Julia Peterson and her crew are at it again. The annual Villa Park Halloween Fest is coming up on Wednesday, October 30. That's Wednesday, October 30, here in Town Center, and we think it's going to be another great one to enjoy. We're asking everyone to bring the kids out, little kids and big kids, and enjoy the citywide favorite event. Also, our latest piece of work is very, very interesting. The foundation is championing a pet adoption day in October, which we are calling Walk with a Friend, and I think I see somebody here sporting a T-shirt back there in the back. Terry Dunsing, who's one of our volunteers, along with Carol here in the back, and Richard Ulmer are the driving forces behind this new project. And this is a first-ever occasion for us, and we're really excited about it. We know it'll be a success with your help. We definitely need volunteers, and we need donations to help pull this thing off. The team is selling T-shirts, and City Hall, I hear City Hall has a supply. Great. The event is being held at nine o'clock, from nine o'clock to noon, on the Green Belt at Wanda and Cotella on Saturday, the 19th of October. Please come. Please, please come. Believe it or not, the annual Villa Park Dry Land Boat Parade is just around the corner. This is crazy. Why am I talking about Christmas? Time is just flying by. As a reminder for your calendars, the Santa tour, coordinated by Jill Couli, is Saturday, the 7th of December, and the boat parade is Sunday, the 8th of December. We're asking everyone, once again, to continue to turn out to make this great event always what it is every year. I just get such a big kick out of this event. This year, we have some co-chairs. Ed Carter and Terry Elmendorf will be helping us to lead the charge on the boat parade event this year, and we're grateful for their involvement and their leadership. And then finally, finally, our grants committee has been hard at work, and Jill is here to help with the presentation of a grant.
Doug, if I may, Holly Von Ting is also instrumental with the movie night with Andy.
Great. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
I think we can say very big thanks to our sponsors and to our members of the foundation because with their help, we are able to help our schools. And I would like to ask, is short all to come up, and we'll show you what we've got to give you.
That is impressive.
So, we thought this, now, the nice part about this is it's double the size that they asked for. And so...
Not just the size, but the financial amount, yeah.
The financial amount. You want one of these things?
I'll take whatever I can get at this point, yeah.
Maybe you can share what it's going to go for.
Yeah, terrific. Villa Park Elementary, as many of you know, the school is outstanding, but our facilities sometimes are in need of a little bit of TLC. And the principal on campus, Deborah Larson, is in a process of multi-year replacing all the picnic benches out at the lunch table and around the surrounding campuses. And so, we put in a request in August for monies, I believe at around $1,200 to $1,300.
Half that amount.
Half this amount for monies for two picnic tables. And due to generosity of the foundation, we received double that amount, which will go towards four picnic tables, and that money will be put into place immediately.
That's great. Come over. Here's a picture for lunch, right? Yeah.
You going to come in this this July?
Oh, sure. Okay. And then for the real deal...
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
But I know you'll enjoy putting it on your wall at the school.
Yeah. I really appreciate it.
I really appreciate all the members for the foundation and all the staff so much.
Definitely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That concludes our report.
Yes, thank you guys very much. Great job down there. That is so awesome. All right. Our next presentation is going to be an update from the Orange County Fire Authority. Will the B.C. please step to the podium?
Good evening. This is James Henry, battalion chief for the Orange County Fire Authority. As you know, October is fire prevention month, and we are having our open house on the 12th at our facility, Alpha Gymboree, from basically 10 to 5, and we encourage everyone to come out. And the week of October 6th and 12th is special because, if you remember, that's when the Chicago Fire occurred, and that's how fire prevention got started. During the open house and throughout that week, there's going to be community involvement. We're talking about fire prevention, cooking fire prevention, extinguishers, and also drowning prevention. So, we encourage everyone to come out, and it doesn't have to be Fire Prevention Week for the community to come out to the fire stations. So, if somebody's out and about and they see the door up, we encourage all people to come in and just announce yourself and come see your fire department and see the apparatus. And, you know, we always have time for the little guys to sit up in the big front seat, you know, and see the fire truck, and everybody enjoys that. Also, we're having a emergency operations session coming up this weekend, I believe, as well. So, just talking with the lieutenant, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? We have a proclamation for you.
Oh, okay.
I utilized his child management services over the weekend and took my grandchild down there for a couple hours and toured every vehicle in the headquarters.
Always fun. Kids love that.
I know.
Absolutely. Even the big kids love that. Yeah, definitely. This proclamation is from the city Villa Park, from the city council, proclaiming the week of October 6 through 12, Fire Prevention Week. I'm not going to read where all the where-haves is and what-ifs and this and that, but I'm going to tell you that we support this, and safety is utmost, and we thank you for the great job you do for us.
Thank you.
Okay. We also have tonight a proclamation declaring the month of November as pancreatic cancer awareness month. I don't know if we have a representative tonight here. Seeing none, we'll make sure they get this. Finally, we have an update from Orange County Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Gunso, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City council. As the B.C. said, this weekend, there's a full-scale evacuation of the Cowan Heights area. It won't affect Villa Park so much, but it is a full-scale evacuation drill. It should be a good time. For the August stats, I'm very pleased with the numbers. We have a total of five Part 1 crimes for August. One of those was considered assault with a deadly weapon, even though we had, no one was hurting the thing. Someone threw a carjacket at someone else and missed them, but technically, it's assault with a deadly weapon. Three were residential burglaries. One of those, no forced entry, things stolen out of the safe. No one has gone over to the safe except the soon-to-be ex-husband. You know, the only item taken was a wedding ring. So, we think we probably are on the trail of who that might be, but it comes in as burglary. Someone else had posed as a real estate agent and went into a vacant rental property and took a Viking gas range. So, and then we had a petty theft. So, pretty good stats for the month of August. For arrest stats for August, we officially have five not related to these ones. Actually, four, excuse me. We have one assault that was an arrest, a vandalism that was arrest, and then we have two residential burglaries that DNA did come back on that are old burglaries. So, those ones, there's warrants out on those people, and they checked them as being assault crime. So, we do have four arrests to report for August. Wanted to talk a minute about our SRO program and what they have going starting this new school year. Our SRO is in the process of completing a plan for security assessments on schools in Villa Park, basically all of Orange County, with the Orange County Intelligent Assessment Center. The principals and their staff will complete a school response form, and our SRO will also do it in all the schools in Villa Park to carry out the assessment. The goals are give information to first responders, collect standardized data across the entire county for all schools, mitigate and encourage a continual plan for review and training, emergency mitigation plans, policies and procedures in place in line with best practices. And with these plans, they plan on addressing the communications plan, which is a big deal, including the initial, the ongoing, and the end of incident notifications, and reporting procedures, including initial notification of the incident, number of suspects involved, locations, weapons, victims, injuries, lockdown procedures, identifying locations of shelter in place, identifying locking capabilities of the school, first aid supply and their locations, when to evacuate, and then evacuation procedures, multiple locations for evacuation routes, transportation of students away from the schools, setting up family assessment centers, off-site location for parents to reunite with their children and receive assistance, also staging areas for law enforcement, fire, ambulances, and mass transit units. Incident command provide primary and secondary command posts for first responders and incident command, as well as emergency management, primary and secondary landing zones, securing perimeter of both inner and outer, and multi-agency uniformity and unity. So, it's a big project, including the assessment center and our SROs, and they had a big meeting down in South County, said it's going to involve all the schools. So, that's what I have for this month for stats. Does anybody have any questions? Very good. We're still working on the key for Villa Park High School. Don't have that as of yet. So, hopefully by this assessment, we may have a ruling on that.
Well, now I do have a question. Because that's a huge issue, that our sheriff's department would not be able to get into the school should there be an incident, and it was on lockdown, because they wouldn't be able to get in.
That's correct.
Our other schools providing the keys to law enforcement in other parts of the county is ours unusual in that.
Yes, I would say, and I can't speak for South County, the only two SROs in my bureau, Foothill High School and Villa Park Foothill, full access to every classroom has an emergency key.
See, that's a real problem that we still need to follow up on, that we have not been able to resolve.
Well, Lieutenant said maybe next month they'll have it done.
Yeah, I'm hoping this is going to, you know, bring that out. Again, it's going to be an assessment of the procedures, whether that forces the school district to do something they're unwilling to do. That's a whole nother issue to tackle, so.
Well, actually, he and I have been talking about this, and you'll remember, we've been at this for a year. And, you know, anything can happen. The time to deal with it is before we have an incident, and it's really disappointing to me that we haven't been able to get OUSD to be more cooperative when other school districts are more cooperative with our law enforcement, especially given the way things have been happening across the country. This is clearly a serious situation. So, if there's anything that we, as a council, can do to assist you, please let us know.
I may reach out, because I've tried to talk to individuals at the district, and some are on board, but the majority are basically, they don't have any control over whether we get keys or not, so.
What's the concern? Does anybody know?
I think just having someone outside of their control, having a key, whether it's law enforcement or not, they're not comfortable with giving a key out, and I don't understand it.
Like, they're going to be able to handle the situation without the assistance of law enforcement. They're not.
Do we know who has? The principal obviously has a key.
Yes. And the janitors and the keys, and the maintenance workers.
The janitors have keys. The principal has key. Who else? Teachers?
Teachers might not have a key to the front office. They may have a key to their room, but...
They have access to the yards, just not to the...
I think it's a matter of control, because we're not under their supervision or control. And, you know, that's, I'm guessing that's what it is, but that's the closest thing I can come up with.
But I have to say, I feel quite comfortable. I realize you don't have a key, and it would be easier to have a key, but if something happened on one of our campuses, I feel quite comfortable that you would take care of our students and the people in there.
I think we would, but in a lockdown situation, yeah, we can't get into certain places that we may have to get into.
You know, and that's when minutes count. You know, you can't wait for somebody to be able to get to...
It doesn't make a lot of sense. The janitor has the key, and the police don't.
Lieutenant Gunso, is that true for all four high schools in OUSD?
Well, the other ones don't have SROs.
That's the only reason, okay.
That's what I was told.
Maybe that's their concern, that if they grant it to one high school, that, you know, fortunately for Villa Park High School, they have a lot of resources available, then they feel like they have to grant it to, you know, law enforcement that's covering the other three schools. And I think it's a little bit dicier.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to Mike Christensen, the superintendent, one more time. I spoke with him about two months on this issue ago, and the reason was exactly right, loss of control, very dumb reason, I will admit. He indicated he was sure it's going to go through, but he was talking with a few other people, so I'll reach out to him again and let him know that we discussed it tonight, and enough is enough.
Well, they did offer lock boxes. The problem with that is you know what's going to happen. They'll put a lock box on one side, and that's where the attack is going to be from, and they can't get to it. And I even suggested, okay, put a lock box in the deputy's car. So...
Yeah, they're really concerned of the key getting in the wrong person's hands is what they're concerned about, but, you know, what can I say? I'll reach out to him again.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
The key could be signed out and signed in and stored, you know, whatever.
Is this also a school board issue as well?
Yes.
It hadn't, no, actually, Mike said it hadn't gone to the board yet, and he wasn't sure he wanted it.
Well, maybe we need to go elected to elected, and maybe it's time...
I'll reach out again.
Maybe it's time for us to pay a visit to one of the board meetings.
Okay, thanks so much. All right. We're now ready to move on to oral communications on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you wish to address the city council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. Oral communications will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Jill Couli, 18411, Jacatall, here in Villa Park. When I went to take a look at the picnic tables over at Villa Park Elementary on a Sunday, that totals, the school was totally locked down. There was no entrance into it at all, and I look at our schools as our playgrounds for our kids. And so, when you talk to Mike Christensen, Mayor, I'm hoping that you will tell him that we really need to be able to have the kids out. That's not going to keep the kids out. They're going to climb the fence, and then they're going to break their leg. So, you know, if that's the way it is. But I do believe it is our community. We're the ones who are paying the taxes for those schools, and I do not believe, if the high school can be open all the time, there's no reason, and Saravilla is, there's no reason why our two elementary schools can't be open for our kids to learn to ride their bicycles and to play on the playground and do those kinds of things, too. So, I would ask...
I agree with you, Jill.
I would ask...
And I have brought that up in the past, and the stories that have come back on that was soccer on the weekends, trash everywhere, tired of it, they got to go, you know, that was the reasons they had given in the past, but I'll try it again, because I do agree with your theory on that. We pay tax dollars, right? Why shouldn't...
We do. And if necessary, we can ask some of our service kids to go over on a Sunday afternoon and pick up the stuff, make sure it's ready to go the next week. I think there are several kids who would be willing to do that as a project, so, but I would like to see it open to the community.
Okay. Thank you, Jill.
Mayor, if I can add to that, at the school advisory committee that took place at the district, that issue was brought up by Councilman Whitaker in trying to use, trying to be able to use the school district sites as a little more recreational space for the city of Orange, and asked whether or not they would be willing to have a staff person on their side and a staff person from the city side look at applying for grants that might be able to, like, put a fence around the actual classrooms where you can actually use the Green Belt area. So, this is something that OUSD agreed to look into and work with the city of Orange, and they're, they want to look at a test site. La Vida was the campus that they were looking at doing, so it appears that they've opened up their mind a little bit to look at areas like that, to see, and that just occurred a week ago.
Okay. Thanks, Deanna.
Potentially fund a tiny, small cleanup budget for somebody to go do that if it was a big enough deal on Sunday, Sunday afternoons or something, Monday mornings.
Okay. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close that off. We're going to move to our first public hearing. The first hearing is to consider the second reading of ordinance 2013-579, adding the commercial professional zone. Going to assume Jennifer might take that. No?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Actually, tonight, this is, although it's a public hearing, it is just a second reading, so I'm going to waive my opportunity to present to you a staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have or the audience might have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer? Seeing none? I guess I would ask the public if they have any comments on this or questions. Seeing none, I'd bring it back to council for a motion.
I still move.
Okay. I think Rick beat you, so you're a second, Greg. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to approve a second reading and adopt ordinance number 2013-579. Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes, thank you very much. Our second hearing is to consider the second reading of ordinance number 2013-580 relating to E4 and R1 zone regulations. Is that a ditto on that one?
Ditto, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I'll move that one as well.
All right. I'm going to open that up to the public as well, if they have any questions or comments on that one. Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Jared?
Yes, motions to approve a second reading and adopt ordinance number 2013-578. Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. That was 580, right? I could get used to this.
That was 580?
Did I say it wrong, Greg?
580, excuse me, 580.
Oh, okay. Boy, this is pleasurable. I'm liking it. All right. Our third and final hearing is to consider the second reading of ordinance number 2013-581 relating to the PC zone for the Villa Park Orchards planned community. I'm assuming that's an additional ditto. Jennifer?
With this, Mr. Mayor, I have a five-hour presentation.
Bring it on. We're used to it. You know, this is too easy tonight.
I am only teasing, and yes, that would be a ditto as well.
Okay. Council members, any questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. No questions or comments on that one?
I'll move it.
Deborah moves it. Rick is a second.
See, you think it was easy, but try to remember the past 10 months of pain and suffering.
Oh, no, I know that. I'm saying tonight is just so great.
I know. But if you beat it up really well, then when you finally do pass it, it goes like this.
There you go. I like it. All right, Jared.
Yes, motions to approve a second reading and adopt ordinance number 2013-581. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next, we move to our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion, approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you'd like to have removed from the consent calendar?
Item seven.
Okay, Deanna, seven.
Six and 11.
Six and 11.
And I'm going to add eight to that.
And eight. All right, sounds good. Can I get a motion for the balance?
I still move.
Okay, I'll second it. Jared?
Yes, Secretary of State, Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Item seven, Councilwoman Fasenelli.
The only reason I pulled...
You missed, wait, it was six was told.
You're right, it just happened in that order, so, my bad.
Okay.
Deborah, item six.
Actually, Rick pulled it, but I do have a comment on it as well.
My bad, again.
Okay, I just have a couple of items for six. Six is the minutes, which I got, well, if we could get these a little earlier, it'd be good, because frankly, I read these over the weekend, but then I don't get them usually until...
You just got them tonight, right?
Yeah, I just looked at them. So, so my, my comments are, there was a, there was a couple of nuisance items on here on the old agenda. I believe it was number six, looks like five and six, Fernando and Center. And I know, I think we tabled these, but there was gonna kind of be a follow-up on them, and I'm just kinda curious to get a report and understand where we're at on these, so they don't just disappear, and somebody comes back two years later screaming like happened before.
With regards to item number five, which was the nuisance status at 1-8231 Fernando Circle, at the last meeting, the city council tabled that matter with the significant improvement that the property owner has made. With regards to 1-0201 Center Drive, we continued it to see if any improvements would be made. Since then, he's cleared the landscaping, he's installed irrigation, and at that matter, we've kind of tabled that, but the code enforcement process is still open on that, and we'll continue to moderate.
Is that, is that the one in Center and Santiago?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I saw that one. What's going on with the other one, Fernando? I know what we did with it, I agree with it, with the minutes, I just want, is anything going on with, any update on Fernando?
No, the property owner's made great improvements to that property. We've heard from all the neighbors, all the neighbors are happy since then, so if the neighbors are happy, we're happy.
Okay, well, that was, that was that question, I got another one here. By the way, just got a little off the point, but right on James, there's a permanent going up there, that property's been stripped, and it's just, it seems like it's sitting there going nowhere. Building process, corner of James and Center.
A second house in on the right.
Yeah, it's just, I've had a couple of people comment to me, is anything ever gonna happen? They've got some, you know, rough stuff in there, it's just been sitting for months.
I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow.
Yeah, go take a look. Okay, my last one on this was the request for approval in the, item 16. It was the approval of the identification sign at Santiago and Taff. Have we got anything updated?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna update on that tonight, I'll do it now, they're starting tomorrow. We're still working on the electrical, that intersection is controlled by the city of Orange. We do not have a meter pedestal that we can pull from in our jurisdiction, so we're still gonna work with them in order to hook into the, the traffic signal box and pull power from there. But as for the sign construction, Bravo will be out there tomorrow. Saw it cutting away.
So what did they decide, did that, that, that cut away the concrete, plates go up on the sides and paste it to the wall?
Exactly, yeah. We'll cut away six to 12 inches of concrete, and then the sign will be standalone. It'll be a budding up to the wall, but it actually won't physically touch or be attached to the wall.
Is there water there?
Uh, there's no water. Irrigation from the neighbors, the rear neighbor yard is, is gonna be, be too far and be too difficult to tie into, so we'll just handwater it. Ivy doesn't require a lot of water, and the guys have a bucket on their car anyway, so, fairly simple.
Okay, maybe the neighbor's drip line or something, well, that's all I had on that one.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion on item six?
Well, I actually had something from that, I was gonna pull up, but Rick did. I pulled the minutes to make a correction to the minutes before we approved them. On page two, where it was talking about those who showed up to speak in opposition to the corner project, Bill, Mr. Macaloney was not here to speak in opposition. He just had some questions. As a matter of fact, he was supportive of it. I called him today to, or yesterday, rather, to ensure I wasn't here remembering it wrong, so I'd like that correction. And then on page nine, where we're at item 18, where we were discussing the, just giving $20,000 to staff, I appreciate the fact that on item 17, you noted my for-the-record concern for it. I would also like my concerns for the record noted in 18, that it was not a plan for exactly how the money was gonna be spent. And that was why I was objecting. I think it's a...
In addition to what was on the top of page 10, Councilman Mills and Polly objected to the process, and I'd like to see the final sign.
I'm sorry, where is that?
Top of page 10?
I'm sorry.
Right above 19.
Oh, you know what? I didn't see that. You know what? I retract that correction, I did not notice it, I just saw that, and I did not flip the page. Please forgive me. My only correction then is on behalf of Mr. Macaloney. Thank you, you did, you did do that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll move it, and if no one else has anything.
I'll second it.
All right, Jared, item six?
Yes, Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. Item seven, Councilwoman Fasenelli.
The only reason I pulled this is because of the significant amount of money that was received through grants, and one of the questions that I had is how we came about to receive that amount of money. And when I asked Jared, he said that Akram was the person who graciously went after these grants, and it is a lot of money, and I'd like to maybe hear from you just a little bit, Akram, to tell us how you did this and to thank you for doing it, because to have two grants at that large size is wonderful, and if we didn't have you looking for that, I'm not necessarily sure where we'd find it. So, thank you for doing it, but if you could give us a little idea of how, you know, how you look for this?
All right, well, there is two grants. One of them is the state local partnership program, and that is really funds are available through the Proposition 1B. And it is administered by the state, and the money is filtered through OCTA. And funds were available, and the, and if you recall, last year, we came in, they had a call for projects, and we proposed to the city council to make a list of some of the street's projects to be funded through this program. And we got approved, and the dollar amount got changed a couple of times, but it was reduced to about $125,000 for that. And the debt funds only can be utilized for the construction of street rehabilitation projects. Okay, the second one is a, what we call it track, it's really rubberized asphalt concrete grant. And this is also, is being provided by the state, and it's the, the state is trying to encourage the various public agency to utilize material that would use recycled tires, such as rubberized asphalt. And as you see, in our project, we're utilizing rubber asphalt instead of conventional asphalt for two things, one, it will increase the structure, you know, of the street, and so it will last longer. Second, we get to get some money for utilizing it. And what the grant is, they'll pay the differential cost between the rubberized asphalt and the conventional. So really, is, they're paying for the extra cost of the rubberized, and we're getting the benefits from, from it. So those are the two grants that we're using. The, still the amount of the rubberized asphalt grant cannot be determined until we see how many tons of asphalt that we utilize, and then, and also, we can determine the differential cost on both regular and the, and the rubberized.
Akram, are these grants typical every year we go looking for, or?
The rubberized one.
The rubberized one, and the RAC vote?
Yes and no. You know, the rubberized asphalt, they only allow the agency to, three times maximum. Yeah, otherwise, you know, they want to spread it over all the various public agencies in the state.
Makes sense.
This is our first time that we've used here in Villa Park, so we've, you know, we took that, you know, run for it.
And that's only for the material for the street restructure, right?
It's only for the material.
Nothing with the, the base of the, of the street, or drainage, things like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's only for the asphalt cost.
But the RAC could be for drainage and things like that, if that's...
No, it cannot.
Not either, that's all on us then?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
I got a quick question, Akram. The rubberized asphalt, do they just grind up tire rubber and throw it in the mix, or sprinkle it on, or do they melt the stuff into the tar? What is it, how does it work?
It's a big process, it's a, one, yes, they grind all the tar to a very fine, you know, material, and it is mixed with the asphalt itself, and they melt it before they add it to the aggregate and do the asphalt mix with that.
What becomes part of the tar, if you will?
That is...
Not part of the rock, the textured stuff in the street?
No, no.
It literally melts with the tar, and you get a rubber tar hybrid compound or whatever?
That is correct.
Okay, and it's more flexible or more durable?
And it becomes more flexible, you know, and it's, it gives more strength to the asphalt mix.
So it's more flexible and crack up as easily, and...
It does not, it prevents from the asphalt from cracking.
So does it stay solid, or does it literally go to a liquid, or does it stay as a rubber?
It is liquid, it is liquid, becomes as, with the asphalt, because they heat it at a very high temperature, it really kind of like melts with the asphalt itself.
So it's not like putting fiberglass in plastic resin? It's like you literally melt, you, you have a new liquid essentially that you pour out?
Approximately, yes. That's correct, yes.
I just curious how it works, okay.
Yes, Akram, it's the same material they use on, on some of the newer interstates as well, right? So they can reconstitute it periodically and take out the...
Now, it's being utilized more often because, one, as I said, it gives more strength. Second, it's less noisy, with the tires going over it, it's less noise, does not generate as much noise as concrete pavement or regular asphalt.
But I notice, I know that when we, they start the process, they dig up part of the street, a little bit of it, and they mix that old stuff in with the new stuff, right?
Oh, no, yeah, this is completely different.
Okay.
This is actually tired, recycled tires, and it's mixed with the asphalt itself, and it's mainly utilized with the top. The other type is recycling the actual old asphalt and mixing it with new asphalt to use it as a base.
Okay, yes.
I have, are we finished talking about that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The construction inspection and management, the $50,000, that's something that civil source does, that our, our engineer does? Is that who?
Okay, we will be sending an RFP to other consultants.
Okay.
And we'll see who would be the winner of that inspection.
So that would be a separate contract?
It'll be a separate contract, that is correct.
That was one question.
Yes.
This is not a question so much as, and Jared and I have already discussed this, you know, we, we redid Lincoln not too long ago, and then we dug Lincoln up. And, and it's gonna be a couple more years before we get back down to redoing Lincoln. So I wanted to ensure that as we're looking at future, and I know you inherited things that were already in progress, but as we're looking at future street and sewer rehabilitation projects, that we're ensuring that we do the sewer first, and then we do the street. I know this is just common sense, but I'm seeing us not always employing common sense, or government certainly isn't good at that, we are better than most, but I just see that we've made, we're kind of sliding backwards a little bit in that, and I'm hoping that going forward, that a greater effort is made. And, and I'm assuming then that all of the streets that are listed here are not slated to have any sewer repairs done in the near future, or they've already had them done? I mean, is, is there something that you're doing, Akram, that, that would be brand-new for the city of Villa Park, quite frankly, to ensure that there's some coordination in that effort?
As a matter of fact, yes, we did some coordination, and some of the sewer rehabilitation that we did are on some of those streets. We did them prior to do the street improvements. So this way, when it's the street rehabilitated, we don't wanna cut it again. Lincoln, it was a, kind of like an emergency situation, we had to do it, as you're well aware of that. And the, the rehabilitation that was done a few years ago on Lincoln, it was mainly just slurry. It wasn't complete repavement, so it's not as bad as it, you know, it sounds. But yes, we will be coming back in the near future to come in and redo Lincoln and do it properly, and so last for a long time.
But since it's all in your hands, you know, you're, you're doing it in that order.
Yes, doing all the utilities first, prior to the paving, so, and hopefully, we will have some kind of moratorium that, on streets that are paved, that, for, moratorium for at least three years that no one can touch it before, you know, after that.
Oh, very good, unless it's an emergency.
Unless it's an emergency, that's true.
You know, a line break, you gotta get in there and do something.
That's correct.
All right, I have a couple more questions, I'm sorry about that. This is two fiscal years joined together. What do we normally spend per, per fiscal year for our street rehabilitation?
About $350,000.
Yeah, 350, 360.
Okay, so we're spending quite a bit more than we normally, normally would.
Because it includes, okay, it includes a big portion of reconstructing cross gutters at several intersections where water is pounding and pooling, so we're trying to improve the drainage at the same time we're doing the street. Similarly, also, we're gonna be reconstructing approximately 700 feet of curb and gutter where we have drainage problems. So we're trying to do it all at once, not just pave the street and keep the drainage problem on that street to exist.
Does that save us money to do it all in one shot like that?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Sure, and in joining up the two fiscal years, because we're a small city, you know, the bang for the buck, because we're doing more than we would in one, one year, but that's quite a bit more. And I just wanna, we have an MOE that we have to maintain in order to tap into our Measure M squared dollars. And, and does that have to all come out of the general fund? And what is that magic number, Michelle?
$263,000.
$263,000 is what we have to spend out of our general fund?
Every year. However, it doesn't have to be specifically just pavement management, there's other, there's other costs that can be utilized by that, using salaries for our maintenance employees. You know, there's different, street sweeping we used in the past. There's various costs that our general fund already pays for that can be deemed street-related, and so that's what they're saying, that MOE has to be street-related.
Right, and see, that's what my concern is, is we're, we're only tapping 176 per one, we've got two fiscal years, does that mean we need to hit, you know, a certain dollar amount? That would be two fiscal years to hit that MOE?
No, 263 is still the one for the fiscal year that we have to meet. Last year, I was very nervous about meeting that, but we did meet it because we had to delay the, the project. And every year when we budget, we budget for that 263, most, a lot, a large portion comes from the pavement rehab project that we do. Since it was delayed, I was a little nervous, but we were, we sat down with OCTA, got a better understanding of what was legitimate expenditures that we could use, and so now we have a new understanding of all the expenditures that can be used for that MOE.
Okay, through street sweeping in there, we no longer actually pay for street sweeping, so that has to be taken out.
Right.
I'm just worried that we hit that, that they don't come back around later on at an audit, which we know can happen, as we will see later on as we're discussing the wall, and say, up, you know what? You never hit your MOE, will you please give us back $155,000?
You can ask, you can ask Akram how we dealt with that.
Because it's a real issue, it's a real issue. As, as governmental entities higher up the food chain are feeling that crunch, they're coming and trying to tap us to get, you know, extract whatever they can out of us, so we better be sure we got our act together on these.
There's other eligible, as Michelle mentioned, there's other eligible expenditures that can be utilized and used in the calculations for that Measure M, you know, requirements.
And it's all documented.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear. That's actually what I wanna hear, that you've got it documented, and it's provable, because I can see that we're not hitting that. You know I've paid attention to that MOE, because it actually irritates me, that we're locked into an MOE from a million years ago, you know, that irritates me. And then the, the last thing I'd like to bring forward, and it's unfortunate that Todd's not here, because he would have the answer. Many years ago, we had all agreed as a council that in contracts that we let, there would be a clause that would be routinely included in the contract that requires that the, whomever we hire ensures that those that work for them are legally, you know, permitted to work in this country, and that they've, you know, gone through a, yeah, gone through either, oh, I can't remember the name of it now, or it's not in this contract, or I can't see it in this contract. We had a clause that had been inserted for... We had a clause that had been inserted for quite some time routinely.
They call it, I know it's, it was a requirement for a while and now it is no longer a requirement. However, it's automatic that all the employees or the contractor has to provide us with a certified payroll for all their employees.
Where does it say that in there? Because I didn't see it.
That's automatically, we require it. And it's, they are required to provide it on a biweekly basis, every two weeks. And it has to be certified and has all the employees that are working on the project with their exact dollar amount that is being paid and also all the benefits. And we do, since this is a state-local partnership program, we would do an interviews with the employees to verify that they are being paid what it is said on that payroll. And they're being paid the actual prevailing wages.
Okay, do they all have individual social security numbers as well?
Okay, well...
No repetitious social security numbers?
The social security number on the certified payroll, it is covered. So this way for protection, you know...
Is it checked to make sure that there's no repetitious social security numbers?
We do not, you know, the employer does not check. We don't check it. The public agency, we don't check that.
That's a point of contention, I think.
Yes, we don't check that.
I don't know if that's something that the Department of Labor Relations or the DIR or Industrial Relations would check. It's not handled by us. It's not specifically written in the contract, but Article 6, 7, 8, and 9...
I saw all those.
...would deal with the state labor code. It essentially deals with it through those codes that it references.
Those are minimums required by the state, but we as a council, and you were still here at that time, we, quite some time ago, maybe four, three or four, it was maybe four years ago. We all agreed as a council that we wanted to have that clause inserted in all the contracts that we let, and it was just a routine clause. Todd had written it up. I didn't see it in this one, ensuring that those that are hired are actually in the country legally and they've been, and they are legally allowed to work in this country. That was something that we wanted as a council, above and beyond whatever the state does or does not require.
That's no problem. I think we can add.
Well, I would like to just, you know, Todd knows what clause we're talking about.
I'll do research and follow up on it.
Would you please?
Yeah, we can make sure that it gets added into this.
I'd like to see where it got, I'd like to see where it got approved. Don't just add it in. Did it actually get approved by the council? And has it been, has it been in the contracts that we've been reviewing since I've been on the council?
I usually look for it. There are certain contracts where we don't, like if it's with the county, we don't because the county has its own, you know, it's a clause that we as a council approved.
We have a couple of contracts here. We have the contract for public works projects, and this has always been our template for it. And then we have a contract for professional service agreements, such as with the Lilly Planning Group or with Civil Source. And I know for a fact it's in those contracts, but I can, I can see that it gets implemented into these public work contracts.
It's a simple, it's a very straightforward and it's really common. I just was, I was looking for it and didn't see it, and it's a concern. When we're spending this kind of money, I'd like to see that. And then if I could, that would be great. And I think it would be wonderful if we did pull that where it was approved by the council for those that are new to the council to see that. It was really straightforward, it was just one simple paragraph. My last question has to do with the streets that have been chosen. Saravilla was originally on it. It's still on this list, and I understand it's been pulled, Saravilla Drive. Are you still looking at something, Akram?
Yes, it's, because of the dollar amount of the project is way over what we have money for, budgeted. And staff is recommending, after the contract is awarded, the staff will, you know, issue a change order to delete Saravilla. And since portion of Saravilla is the city boundaries with City of Orange, kind of like meander sidewalk, it belongs to the city of, you know, in one area it belonged to the city of Villa Park, another area it belongs to City of Orange. So we felt, let's take it out for this time and delay it. And we'll try to sit down with the City of Orange and maybe we can get them to share in some of the costs of some of the improvements that within, actually within their property, you know, boundaries.
That's very good. The streets that have been selected this time, and it has not always been the case, are definitely streets that need attention. You know, workmen in particular, I mean, I can see that these are not just selected because a computer popped them out, which is a problem we had in years past under a different city engineer. My question, and they're rationally grouped together. My question has to do with Streets 10 and 11 where you're looking at Patrician and Camden Circle, and I'm wondering why we're not continuing that entire loop out of Sterling as well? It just makes sense because of the way you're grouping these things together. And is there a way to look at that if you're going to drop Saravilla, unless it's a dollar amount issue, and complete Sterling so that entire loop gets done at the same time? That would just be a recommendation if you can do it? Since you've got such common sense going into this street project this time.
As you mentioned, really, it's, we try to, there's several ways that we've looked and came up with a list. One, utilizing the pavement management program that the city has, and also our investigation, field investigation on this, out on the street in the field. And also, we try to combine the neighborhood. So this way we won't be doing one street and not the other and so on. So this way, one, it's easier to do them, you know, for construction-wise. And also in the future, then you'll have the, all that neighborhood has the same history rather than one street is being done in 2012, the other one in 2015 and so on, and all that makes it. And Sterling, we took it out, and I'm trying to remember, one, it was, it became this whole list, you know, overwhelming and very costly. So we took it out and Sterling wasn't as bad as part of Camden and Patrician. And there was a, some drainage problem also in that area. So that's why we said, okay, let's do those.
But you know exactly what I'm talking about, all of it.
Yes.
Everything, I see this. And you, this makes so much more sense than what's been done in the past. I actually commend you because it's exactly the kind of thing we've been talking about for many years. And so what, the only, the only question I have is you've got Patrician, you got your little Camden, you know, circle, and then all of a sudden, what? There's going to be a line and the rest of what naturally is flowing is going to be, you know, old stuff. Okay, I'll just respect your opinion there. I would love it if you could figure out how to stick it in there.
If there is enough funds, we'll try to, you know, we'll look into it.
Thank you. This is important.
I'm sure it's money related.
Yeah, well, perhaps, perhaps it can be done. That was my only question. Those are all, thank you very much.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Deanna, any other comments on it since you pulled it? Okay, great. Jared, item seven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion is to approve the recommendation in the staff report. Plans and specs for the street project authorized the mayor to execute a contract with RJ Noble in the amount of $818,246 and authorized the finance director to amend the budget as noted. Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item eight, Deb.
Item eight is the improvements that are being made to VPTV. I want to pull that off. This has been a baby of mine since I first got on the council and we've come a very long way. So I wanted you to have an opportunity, Jared, to tell us what, what's the next step?
The next step of improvements is the equipment and infrastructure is there, however, it's just kind of splattered all over the table right now. So what we want to do is professionalize a little bit more, put some monitors on the wall, get a couple more monitors so we don't have to switch between devices in order to see what's on Time Warner, what's on AT&amp;T, what's on streaming. We go get three different monitors and know instantaneously whether or not they're working. It will also be to label some of the wires. When, when the equipment was installed, we never labeled the wires. So one person's on one side of the wall, I'm on the other, tugging wires here, and "Do you have that one? Is it this one?" So we're going to pull everything apart, label the wires, and then hook it up properly, essentially so we have a map where 10 years down the line, somebody can look at the map and, you know, trace how the, the system's hooked up and actually installed. It's not glamorous. It's no robotic cameras in the, in the council chambers here, but it's, you know, behind the scenes work that needs to get done.
That's where we started, though, the huge improvements of having wall-mounted cameras instead of tripods that were tripping off, over, and a, one guy with a joystick in the back instead of, you know, high school students who are texting. I mean, it's just been, and I got to tell you, since, once we got through the first six months of this and a little bit of rocky road, I have received zero complaints about sound quality, which we received, I think, all the, all the time. It was nonstop, quality of sound. We've made improvements where our, our council meetings are broadcast live streaming for people to view wherever they happen to be and are archived on demand. A huge step forward for our city, something that other cities still don't have. And I'm just really proud of the work that you've done because I know you had to do a lot of it at that time. And all of this money can only be spent on capital improvements anyway? It's PEG?
Absolutely.
My question is, because I'm kind of out of the loop, some of this has been pulled out, you know, are we getting PEG also from AT&amp;T, U-verse, or where's all our PEG money coming from now?
PEG is received from Time Warner and for AT&amp;T. So all the subscribers in the city pay a dollar, a dollar twenty-five portion as part of their bill. It's hidden in all the gibberish that they send to you guys. How much do we receive every year? So we receive about $9,000 and as we pad that fund, we come back and fund some improvements such as this.
What I'd like to do, because it's been a long time since we've looked at this, we used to chart, we were watching the numbers dropping off. You know, you could see things heading a certain direction as more and more people left one provider for another or went to DirecTV. And you could start kind of seeing the money was, we were going to be losing money as part of the reason why we, I think, pushed this through. I'd kind of like to, if it's possible in your downtime, get a feel for, you know, what's the trending been like, let's say, in the past three years? Where's the money coming from as far as, and split it up between Time Warner and AT&amp;T, number of subscribers, so we can get a handle on that again. I just would like to see it because it's been a long time. But I think we've come a really, really long way. This is a very logical next step. I just wanted to pull it primarily to commend Jared for the work you did on this and are continuing to do.
Sounds like a motion to me.
It is a motion.
Great. Okay, we have many seconds. Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's to authorize the city manager to purchase the necessary equipment from via my video for VPTV author, her operations and authorize the finance director to release the designated reserves as indicated in the staff report. Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you. Item 11 is Mayor Proton Barnett.
I just want to understand this a little bit, is this tie agreement, is this the, is this the property right over here between Rock Wells and...
Yes, it is.
You know, I still don't really understand what's going on here. Can somebody give me a plain English explanation?
In plain English, as simple as I can present it, is if you turn to the map, parcel two on the map and parcel four on the map are owned by the same company. But the state of California, it's owned by two separate individuals since there's two separate parcels. Right now, the trash enclosure is actually built across the property line on parcel number four. But what the property owner wants to do is, much like the Post, they want to add a new facility for cake shop and cake tasting with an office above it. But they cannot do that because California law does not allow them to build over the property lines even though they own each property. So this latte agreement essentially ties the two properties together and makes it one single building site. So now all of a sudden, you can build over parcel two and four, and it defers the problem to when they ever decide to sell the properties. If they sell parcel two, they have to make it right. If they sell parcel four, they have to make it right down the line. It's kind of convoluted, but essentially it's creating one, one single building.
They married them on paper.
Yes.
That's, that's all they did. They married two parcels on paper and said, now we can, now go make your house.
We own each, we want to build over both properties as we see fit.
It makes total sense.
Yeah.
So, so I'll be glad to make...
And then we can get rid of that.
I'll be glad to second it.
Be glad to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2013-3255.
Do you have any other questions, Lando Rick?
No, I think that's good enough. So this will end our bare plywood fiasco over there?
End it until we do this.
Okay, well, I'm, you know, I'm in, so.
And as part of this, I believe AT&amp;T's...
We've got a motion and a second.
Going to replace the cell tower as well. And we're, Jennifer's in discussions with them about co-locating with Verizon Wireless, and we put it on a silver platter, so let's hope, let's hope it happens.
And a new design.
And a new design.
That really actually looks like a tree?
Well, actually, we'd be hoping for something other than a tree, something that adds some architectural interest in our town.
Nice.
I like it.
All right, motion, second.
No, not a water tower.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. Item 12, next we will consider a request, this under new business, for the closure of the block wall along Fitchin Ranch Road. Jared, do you have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past couple of months, we've received a request to, to close sections of the block wall along Fitchin. Fitchin block wall stretches maybe approximately quarter mile, half a mile, and it has three breaks in between. Now, I just realized that the pictures are not in color. Each break is about 40 feet wide. Block wall along the two larger breaks is about six feet in height. And then near the end of Fitchin Ranch Road where it meets Portsmouth Circle, there's a little concrete path that goes through a semi-green belt. The block wall portion down there is about five feet in height. So we've had some requests from the residents in the area to close this section of the block wall, acting essentially as a deterrent for some of the riffraff that comes in from the neighboring city. We received some quotes, quotes to do the work, simple wrought iron with a gate closure much like you'd find around your pool with a padlock, is about $4,000 to do, to do the work. CDC met, CDC met actually a couple of times on this issue and recommends that we do not fund this project as it mainly is a deterrent. I don't think it's a permanent solution. It's a deterrent. They can walk around a couple hundred feet and still access the same streets.
They have other people come and pick them up in other cars. I mean, it's, you can't really do it. And I think it's, as Deanna's pointed out, it's also a safety issue for escaping that area as well. So there's lots of things that don't really warrant this, this type of activity. And it's been there a long time.
Go with that for available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions of staff, council?
I do have just a question. When you're looking at the, the breaks along the wall, that was kind of added in, was that going to have gates as well?
It will have a gate as well.
All, all three of them? So along there and at the end?
It's nothing fancy. We, I quoted it out as inexpensive as possible. It's a little latch with a thumb lock rather than the crash, we don't have a crash exit bar, a crash exit bar what you'd find around a, right here, on this door. That's something that could, would, you know, self-closing and then you wouldn't have to lock it, you just couldn't open it from the outside.
It really doesn't solve the problem. You know, the problem that, it really doesn't, which is unfortunate. You have, you know, people who live across the street parking there on the, and maybe leaving their cars there, which has been an ongoing problem for a long time. You see it have a lot of, and I've actually witnessed it, you know, young kids that, that come in there just to run down the street, they don't necessarily, I'm positive they don't live in Villa Park. You see them accessing through from the bus stop. I've seen them damaging, physically damaging the property as they're going along just for kicks. I've seen it happen.
just for kicks. I've seen it happen. So, when I get these reports from the residents who are living there, I know it's true, 'cause I've seen it. So, I, I wish we could come up with a, a solution. I think this is a, a very inexpensive solution. Would it deter enough? Maybe.
Jared, do we have, um, any, um, written evidence or whatever of the types of things that are happening to these residents with those? Um, as someone mentioned up here, those breaks have been there a long time. Uh, do we have graffiti issues? Do we have some residential burglaries, we think, coming from this? Do-
There's the occasional graffiti.
Is there any evidence other than a few residents yapping a little bit, or?
I mean, there's occasional graffiti, um, along the inside of the block wall or even the outside. Uh, you'll, we'll see it on the concrete, but again, we see that throughout the rest of the, the community. Um, there are some car break-ins, but, 'cause I think the Sheriff's Department says it's crimes of opportunity where you walk along the streets and you just try and open every car door, and half the time, it's because the car door was locked.
Certainly, you can't attribute these items to those openings. I mean, you can't really say that, you know?
And we removed the parking. There, we have parking restrictions now on Fitchin Road.
Well, it's not, it hasn't been completed yet.
Well, it's, it's happening now because of the, in the next-
Is this park, is this gonna be prohibited parking all the way down the strip?
Along the west side of the strip.
West.
We haven't installed it yet, because that's the staging area for the sewer project.
That's correct.
Right, and so they could just park across, is that, is that-
When's that gonna be done, Alcrum?
Uh, it'll be done within, uh, between two to three weeks.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you can still park on the other side of the street?
Mm-hmm.
And do we, it, I, we did have a problem with that, as I recall. It was more down at this far end, down by the apartments, down by, by Collin.
We're talking two, three, four cars at most. There's more folks parking on the Roberto-Fernando streets that we just addressed than along Fitchin Ranch here.
And my concern, looking at this, is, you know, if this will really accomplish anything, it's a pretty easy, cheap way to do it and to keep people happy. Uh, but if it's a complete waste of time, then not much point in spending, spending the money. I guess that's, I don't know how to determine that, but if this would accomplish much of anything, I'd be in favor of it.
You get a lot of walkers down there. You get a lot of walkers who go in and out, you know, on there. You don't wanna box, let's not box Villa Park in. It's been there from the beginning, and I do understand their, their concerns. We've had, I've had graffiti in my neighborhood also coming around from Roberto, and trash, and, you know, kids are, kids are kids. Vandalism is-
But there's nothing objective saying it's that problem. You know, I mean, that's the problem here.
Right, I don't think it's that problem. I know that we, um, there were some neighbors who, you know, had some ding dong ditches, you know, 'cause they came in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that happens, no matter where we are. We had a, the Home on Valley was having the same issue. So, I, I think vandalism does a-
I think a gate does say something to young people, and those are the ones that I've seen, li, now, I'm talking not about the residents, I'm talking about our property. I, I was walking one day and saw just a little gang of three boys that just had too much time on their hands, literally picking up a big slab of concrete that they'd found, and they were slamming it into our trees and damaging, and I took pictures of it, 'cause I was just, and I yelled at them. I said, "What do you think?"
Did you arrest them?
Did I arrest them? I yelled at them. I asked them. I asked them.
Right, Lieutenant Galavan? I mean, you're an official. You have your official ID card.
I don't want my official ID card. Do you think it's okay for them to do that to our trees?
Of course not.
I mean, they were, they were just, you know, so, so it's a tree one day, it's somebody's car the next, it's whatever was available to them at that time. I think it does deter younger people. I think a gate that's put up does deter younger people. Will it deter hardened criminals?
No.
No. But, you know, they have issues down there, and they're somewhat vulnerable because of the way their cul-de-sacs are situated in this long stretch, and you're inside a wall, and you can get away with a lot. And if we can do anything to keep part of them on the outside of the wall, you're not so apt to do things when you're easily seen as you are on the outside of the wall. If it was forty thousand dollars, I think that would be something to pause, but four thousand, it's been requested by several residents down there, and I think we, I think we should give it a try and just to see if it abates the problem. I just don't think it's that huge of an expenditure. They've been paying taxes, many of them, for longer than some of us have been alive, so.
Let me make sure, let me make sure I understand this. So, as I'm walking down that road now, I can't, I have to go through, I cannot get out.
Yes, you can.
If, if we chose to, to lock it.
Well, why would you not lock it if you put it there?
Why would you lock it?
Exactly, of course you're gonna lock it.
Unless you could have a one-way opening where-
A brand for a gate you open up?
And they can't reach in to get it, and you, like you were talking, a barn, you can push it and go out.
And that was, that would triple the cost.
Of course, then you can't come in. You know, once you're out, you're out unless you got a pass or something.
You can only exit.
I, I have a suggestion here. Um, you know, some of these things, we get these proposals, and then we get people into the same neighborhood screaming, "We don't want them." So, my thought would be, 'cause I don't have a problem doing this, but my thought would be, unless you al, already have this information, maybe we do a little mail-out or something survey to that, to that whole strip down there, you know, those cul-de-sac stuff down there, and say, "Here's what's been proposed. Do you want this? Please check yes or no and make any comment you want, and get them back to us by the end of the month or thirty days or whatever, and let's see what the people say, 'cause I don't have a problem putting them in."
That's a good idea.
But let me add this up. This has come to the CDC already. We haven't had any residents, we've done it twice. We've done-
And you, and they were notified that you were gonna be discussing it?
Yes, yes, and this, because they brought it to us. They haven't come to the CDC meeting. Then again, and now it's brought to council. I still don't see anybody here. I ha, I have not received any emails, unless Greg has, and I don't know about it.
I don't think it should be on, on us.
So, I was quite surprised to see this here.
How many people, Jared, has complained about this? How many residents, would you say?
Yeah, I, uh, honestly, two.
Two, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so, kind of a tough one. Let's, uh, let's-
I think the mail-out wouldn't, you know, just mail out, what are we talking?
We've already done it.
But there's only, we've, we've done it.
Rick, Rick, we've already done it.
We've, we've had two CDC meetings on it.
They, they had to come to a meeting, though?
Well, they have, if they want something, you gotta be proactive. Believe me, they come. People do come, or they call us.
I'm out on it.
Yeah, or they send an email.
And you, they, they were notified that there was a-
There's a lot of homes down there.
We, it was posted publicly. I did not have to-
But they were not notified that this was being discussed. See, posted-
Well, but it's on the agenda.
No, but nobody, yeah.
Come on, Deanna. Did you read the agenda?
I do. Why do I think I'm sitting up here right now? Because for years, I read the agendas for the city council.
Yeah, but not everybody does that.
But people aren't that interactive.
Okay, but send, then send us an email telling me what the problem is.
Oh, wow.
And those who would call us and would actually complain, we notified of the meeting, and, and they did not show up.
They didn't even bother showing up.
Yeah.
All right, well, then they don't, they don't care that much.
Let's open this up to the public. Does anyone wanna speak of this item from public?
I do.
Do you? Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Dowling Tsai. I live on one seven eight three one Beckley Circle. So, I live, I've been in there for about twenty-one years. Uh, some of the things I kinda notice is there's a bus stop adjacent to one of the openings. So, sometimes, we see the, uh, those riders waiting for the bus on our way out. Uh, they were kinda staring at us. And when my wife took my kid to school, and she saw someone staring, staring at her also. So, it doesn't make us feel very secure that people are watching us going in and out of the neighborhood. Uh, because if we do block the opening off, I think we kinda reduce the, the chance for the opportunist to come in to do, to do something to our neighborhood. That's one. Uh, two, when I come home, driving south on Fitchin Ranch Road, sometimes I see people, uh, coming through the opening. Uh, sometimes they be, maybe running, uh, maybe riding a bicycle. And when they count onto the Fitchin Ranch Road, they wouldn't pay attention to the oncoming traffic. So, it could be a liability issue for the city also. Because of war, the driver cannot really see what's going on on the other side until they suddenly appear in front of you. Uh, another thing is that we do walk around the neighborhood, and we do use the sidewalk, but a lot of the time we see the people walking along Fitchin Ranch Road, they will prefer to walk in the street. Uh, one is because there's no curb ramp. For, sometimes the parents or grandparents pushing a stroller, they have to walk in the street because there's no curb ramp, so they can use the sidewalk. And sometimes those passing through pedestrian or the, the walkers, they may be exercising or maybe going to, uh, the City of Orange, uh, they would rather walk on the street instead of using the trail along the Wanda Road. So, if they are just exercising, they wanna walk around, they can still walk around the neighborhood, but the, by putting the fence up, it will push those passing through traffic using the Wanda Road, so they wouldn't walk in the street.
So, let me see if I understood that. The sidewalk is on the Wanda's side. It's outside of Villa Park there.
Uh, this is on sidewalk on the east side of the, uh, Fitchin Ranch Road.
Oh, on the east side, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I, now, to be clear, Dowling Tsai is not one of those that I heard from. It, you're a traffic engineer, aren't you?
Uh, yes, I am.
So, he's got some expertise. I, I'd never heard from you, so I'm, I'm glad that you showed up to share your side, because I've heard from several people, you know, that they've got issues down there, and I have witnessed it myself. I walk that route, too, and I prefer to walk inside. It's my city. But my cons, I think we should, I think we should give it a try, or-
We can look to piecemealing it together. Uh, I think the entrance, uh, near the south end of Fitchin Ranch at Port's Mouth is where the bus stop is. We can look to close that one off first, give it a couple of months, see what happens, and then we can close off the other sections, um, a little bit north there on Villa Park, closer to Lincoln.
So, you're gonna close the bus stop off, so people who work in the city, um, we have families who come to school who take the bus also, who their children go to Villa Park Elementary. So, I mean, we're closing the, the entrance points to our city at that point.
I think for me, Jared, I mean, at best case for me tonight to support something, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Barnett that some of the people may not want them closed. So, I, what I would like to see is a little survey with those little side streets to see, "Do you wanna close or do you not?" I mean, I, I'd like to kinda hear from them before we do anything. Um, I don't know. I mean, I, I hear what you said. It makes sense, but you're one person.
I agree.
Jared mentioned there's only two that have spoke up about it. Um, I'm impressed that you came tonight to speak up about it. That says something, but there's, you know, what, two hundred residents right in that area?
I understand.
Some are gonna say, "No, I want them open," for whatever reason. Maybe a lot of them will say, "No, close them. They're a problem," and then I think we'll vote and do it.
Yeah, it would be embarrassing for them to see them.
Yes, put them in, it'd be embarrassing.
And then hearing from two people, we got twenty people that call and scream at us, okay?
That's true.
So, I, I, I agree. My, I think the idea probably did make sense. If we can mail them with it, with it, "Here's what we're talking about doing."
And a little postcard vote thing, just something easy. I don't know.
And where's it going to? It needs to go larger than that area because of the, I mean-
Two-sided, "Here's what we're talking about doing."
You have to at least hit Aberdeen as well.
Here are some of the issues. Do you want it or not? And then give them a month to mail them back.
All the little streets right in that little area, Aberdeen included, sure. It makes sense to you?
Yes, it does.
That way, we have some real direction.
And down, but you're gonna need to go down Fernando, and you're gonna need to go down Laconia, because if you're gonna close that, if you're gonna close the entrance of that bus stop, now those people are going to now impact going around Roberto, because they can't walk through the safe environment of Fitchin Road. I mean, you're impacting other areas.
They can walk around the outside on the sidewalk along Wanda.
And I've, and I don't walk along Wanda, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna smell the, the gas, but you, they can go either way. I'm just saying, you can go either way. You're diverting the traffic now to the other neighborhoods. So, you know, people who didn't purchase their home along a busy road are now getting the traffic.
I think we should get the people's, the input of the people that live there.
We need input, yeah.
Well, I, I think this is kinda redundant, because we've done this already twice in the last six months. And this is what's kind of upsetting, not upsetting, but it's kind of odd that this is even on our council agenda tonight. And, and we, we've done this twice. We had really no turnout, no response to speak of, and now we're, we're wasting twenty-five, thirty minutes right now doing it. So, let's vote on it and get it going with it. Are we gonna table it after another study?
I propose we send out the survey.
Then you gotta, well, that's a-
I support that, and bringing it back once we get some input.
I would either support the survey, which would be my number one thing, or I'm a no on the other thing, if we're gonna vote on it tonight. I mean, I wouldn't do it.
Make a motion, Rick.
Yeah.
I move that we send out a survey to the adjacent residents, and give them a month or whatever, a month or so to, to respond, and then we readdress it.
Review, review.
So, this is a sub-motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that doesn't address this.
And I'll, I'll, well, well, it, it does. This is how he's going to deal with it, to recommend that the staff discuss and provide direction. That's the direction that he would like, and I am supporting that. I think it's the best that we get a better feel. I'm only hearing from a few people as well, so let's find out how they feel about it.
Uh, okay, we have a motion and a second on that. Greg, do you wanna make a motion? Different one?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Motion to-
Thank you, sir, very much for your-
Canvas the surrounding neighborhood and return at a future date.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fessinelli?
No.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Mayor Reese?
Yes. Okay, uh, let's see. Item thirteen. It's time to hear individual council member information, item starting with Councilmember Mills. Do you have any reports or comments to share?
Yes, first of all, welcome. Taylor Valentine?
Yep, Taylor.
Uh, second of all, thank you, De, uh, Deborah, for bringing up the green toxins thing. Uh, the letter you wrote was very, very nice regarding the green toxins that of the dogs.
Oh.
And also, uh, Lieutenant Gunzel, you had, uh, given a report about the, I guess-
You said something nice about me for the last minute.
Should I repeat that?
Yes, please.
Anyway, I was thinking, thank you for the, the note you wrote back to the resident about the green toxins along the path.
Thank you for repeating that. Go on.
I'm sorry.
I thought my voice was loud enough anyway.
It's always picked up, no matter what I say, so.
Sometimes whether you want to or not.
Yeah, whether you want to or not. And also, regarding the report with, at the high school about the lighter and the, uh, that was kinda strange. Is that girl okay now?
Yeah, second or third degree, tight burns.
Okay. Uh, also, I wanted to let everyone know that there is a, a lot of going on at the vector control, which is the mosquito control, uh, issues that we have in the county. It's, it's a special district, but there's a big redevelopment, uh, funding, uh, issue going on of about twenty million dollars that the cities of Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach and Cypress are suing the Director of Finance of the, of the state. It's gonna be a big mess. It's gonna get even larger with the special districts because of their share of the redevelopment money. Uh, so it's, we're gonna start hearing about it in the newspapers in about three months. I wanna let you know about that. Um, of course, we've got, uh, other issues here with, uh, the, uh, also, the vector control would like to offer speakers to come and, and enlighten the public, either at our city, uh, functions or our, or community meetings, or here at the city council regarding all sorts of infestations of, of vermin that they take care of. And you'd be surprised how many, uh, how much activity they have here in Villa Park. There's a lot of elderly residents, and I've brought this up before, that have pools that are now, uh, defunct, basically, and they are full of mosquitoes, and that's your neighbors that you would not believe. Uh, so, there's that, and also, um, of course, Carol Dunson's not here. I was going to thank her for the, uh, um, walk, the, your friend, Walk the Dog thing coming up on the nineteenth of October. And then, of course, uh, we also have National Walk the School Week, which I'm sure Deanna's gonna talk about regarding October ninth, and that's a great activity we should all turn out for. Thank you.
Greg, is there a way for us to identify through that agency who's got stagnant pools with a bunch of mosquitoes breeding?
Yeah, we got a list of them.
Okay, I, I gotta tell you, I'd, I'd like to get that, because I'd, I'd propose that we put that on the nuisance list. You've got stagnant pools breeding, breeding-
Better watch out on that one, Rick.
Breeding mosquitoes.
The Orange County Vector Control already handles it. That's not within our purview. Um, they breed mosquito fish that they drop into the pool, and, and that's what we pay on track.
It's really amazing because the Vector Control people are first-name basis with all these folks in town. I've ridden with them, and you go in there, it's, it's a service. They, they're happy to do it because maybe one, one in a hundred affects all, and it just is taken care of. And that's what they pay, we pay basically three bucks a year for, and that's it.
We have worked with them for us to identify the locations where the water's pooling and ponding, and that's part of the curb and gutter repair that, that we're taking care of as part of the street project.
There's also other green belts. There used to be trail, horse trails through the city that have grown up, and then they, they form berms as they go in along, and there's also stagnant water there even after rain or from irrigation.
Well, that I can see. I'm just...
Yeah, so there's lots of little things that it's, it's, they're not really nuisance, but some of the folks there, they're, they're dilapidated. The, the folks have, they're, they're very ill, they're, they're elderly, they have, uh, mom can't take care of it, and dad's infirm now, so it's, it's all sorts of little things like that, and it's, as Jared said, the Vector Control takes care of it, and it's kind of one of those things that it's just taken care of, and I think it's, it's a good...
How do they find them, Greg? Satellite pictures? How do they, is that how?
They, they can actually take the freak, what, what kind of green it is in the pool.
But I mean, how do they get in the backyard to even see it?
Aerial.
Okay, so they do, do it from aerial.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Oh, they drop the fish, they fly over and drop the fish?
Not that sophisticated.
No, they have little parachutes.
No.
You said aerial.
No, the aerial, aerial monitoring is that they, they can tell if a pool...
Oh, I understood that. I thought you were saying they were treating them, and I'm thinking you're putting fish and treating them. They fly over the helicopter and drop them?
They identify them.
They identify them, and then they're on a first-name basis.
Then they go knock on the door and pour the stuff.
And then they pour the fishies in, yeah.
I've been, they walk, they just walk in, they say, "Oh, hi, hi, hi..."
Mary.
Particular guy's Rico, our guy, and he, he knows everybody by name. They all know. And they know that they're gonna come in like every other week and put some fish in.
So, so it is under control, so it's not a problem?
I think it's, that's Vector Control. They're actually gonna come out with a new mosquito in Vector Control because a lot of people don't associate vector with mosquitoes. That's the major issue, but also they take care of a lot of rats and mice infestations as well. Raccoons, possums, any type of rodent.
I'm sympathetic to the people, but you can't, if you have a swimming pool, you can't leave it as a big green, you know, breeding grounds for mosquitoes for all your neighbors. So if they can control it, it's not a problem. I guess that's...
I think all these folks can't even afford that. They don't, their backyards are brown. They're just, they're just, they can't, they just, it's just the way it is. And Vector Control takes care of it. It's usually run off, uh, irrigation water, maybe from them, from somebody else, so...
I'm sympathetic.
I understand. Yeah, I, I, I was surprised, too. So that's why I like to report about it because it's something that, it's one, it flies under the radar a lot, and we should be aware of it, and Jared's on it as well.
I mean, if they're all alone, right?
The guys, the guys do a good job to take care of everybody.
I suppose that's one thing, but otherwise, you know, if it's that bad, then maybe some of these people need to dispose of it. The house is too big a burden. They need to go someplace where it's manageable.
I don't think we, we have that right to tell them what to do.
Well, I think we do have the right, maybe if not the duty, to do that if there's a problem. But if you're telling me it's not an issue, you know, the dead yard, we don't care about, we can't see it, and they, and they can put enough fish in there that, you know, that they, no mosquitoes, but, you know, if you're breeding mosquitoes, I think, 'cause you can't take care of it, and you're getting, you're getting too old or whatever, then sometimes it is time to make a move. And if I were in that position, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect people to put up with that. I would, you know, I would want somebody to get me out of there. I'd wanna get out of there and go someplace where I could manage it, um, so...
I think your point's well taken.
You know, that's, you don't, you know, there's a, there's a, you get to a point where you need to make a change sometimes, and that applies to me as well as anybody. So, but is it covered?
I think, I think it's working right now and it's covered. Does that, that's the main thing. It's, if we're getting 80% of something, I think it's pretty good, so, on a situation like that. And otherwise, and, and they will also ask us to help and identify other sources. They're happy to do it. They, they really are, so I think it's, it's a pretty good program. And they've also expanded their, their, their fish hatchery as well to, to, because it's getting larger and larger. Uh, there's a lot more water, and, and, and as our county settles and earthquakes happen, we have more and more small little berms and ponds everywhere, so they're, they're taking care of it.
I mean, that, that's what they're for, you know, from my perspective, but not necessarily...
And also, some of, some of them are seasonal. That, that have, they're, they're, they exist more in the spring than they do later on in the fall because they dry up. There's that as well because of rains. And now we've been through a dry spell. We'll probably go into a wet spell again.
Pools won't dry up, though. Pools won't dry up.
No.
That's what I'm getting at. Yeah, I'm not talking about that.
Are the fish real little, Greg? Little baby fish that eat up the mosquitoes?
Yeah, they're specifically, that's what they do. They, they eat the larvae or the mosquitoes in the water. And they'll last a few years, and then finally, you know, the egrets get them, and they go back a couple weeks later and put some more in. That's what they do, and they've got these tanks in their trucks. That's what they're for, the tank on them, the truck. That's what it's for. They have foggers. They have all sorts of different equipment for that, and they can do mosquitoes and other types of, I think they even do grasshoppers if that gets bad. So it's, it's a pretty good little service. They've got an entomologist on board and everything.
Okay. Anything else, Greg?
No, that's it. I think I spoke too much. I didn't intend to speak too much.
No, you know what?
Oh, we love it.
That may be the most complete and interesting Vector Control report I've had in six and a half years on the council, quite frankly.
I never realized.
Well, I'm a nerd. I like that kind of sort of stuff, so...
Speaking of having compassion for the elderly, Mr. Barnett, on September 5th, I attended the Grand Jurors Association of Orange County's lunch in Deanna went as well. We were invited, we've never been invited before. I'm not quite sure who might have been responsible for that. I know we have several residents in the city of Villa Park who have served at one time or another on the grand jury. But the, uh, the reason I went was because the topic was the Council on Aging, and the only thing I'm gonna bring out about that is the Council on Aging is primarily a volunteer-based and privately funded organization, and it seems like it genuinely cares. I brought some additional information that I shared with Greg because the, the woman who spoke was very good, and she said that she'll go and talk to any, anyone, any organization that wants to invite her. But one of the things that kind of came out was that, you know, sometimes the adult protective services, which is the, you know, taxpayer-funded government bureaucracy, tends to be far less responsive to the needs of the elderly in our community. And as you've noted, we have many, many, many elderly in, in our population is aging, so I thought it was a really interesting presentation. I'm sure Deanna will have more to say about it, but I brought some additional information back for anybody who'd like to see that. I'm hoping that Jared's gonna report on the special meeting that you're gonna have in October with the high-pressure gas lines. And when you do, I have a couple things I wanna say about that, and also the Alert OC test that took place this morning. Read about it in the paper, so I stuck around to wait to see how that came. Who did our voice? Who was our voiceover star?
Our new intern, Amanda Worsham.
That's what I thought.
I received all of them.
Please.
All three phones and email.
It only went to the, uh, to residents. It didn't go to businesses in the community, so we didn't have a call here at State Hall. I received the email, but not a call from them. I'm glad to hear at work, because we also received calls from a number of residents turning our calls.
Well, she did a nice job. I did this, you know, I hit the, you know, the star just to see if it would replay. It did. But, you know, the problem is, is there was a lot of information. I'm sure you have the script available since she read it. Is it possible to send that out on E Network as well? And then perhaps provide it to Villa Park Magazine because everyone gets that, and that tells them how they can sign up to get those notifications for those who didn't receive it, but, yep.
Sentry, too, but, but you could put in the sentry as well.
Send it to the sentry, yeah. That, that script is a lot to digest.
Oh, absolutely, it was.
But the main, the main portions of it, of course, are where people can sign up. If they're not signed up, if they're not signed up, they didn't get the test this morning, so they wouldn't even know. So we've gotta figure out a way around that. Oh, uh, what, there, there was one thing I did wanna bring out about this Council on Aging. I did not realize we have 1.2 million seniors in Orange County. That is a lot of people out of, you know, 3.16 or whatever, million, million residents, so it's kind of surprising that there were...
What is the Speaker, oh?
I don't know. I think we're getting close to qualifying. I, I think that they, they...
Duty's discount?
I think it's like 65 or older is how they...
We're about 33% of our residents are 65 and plus.
See, that's, that's significant. It might be interesting to invite this woman to come and do a special event, either the foundation, we could pass it, gonna pass it to the foundation? I think that would be a really good suggestion. On September 11th, I went out, I was invited to be one of the speakers at a 9/11 event with multiple patriot organizations and community groups. For, it was also, it was 9/11 Remembrance and 400 Flags for Benghazi. Myself and Navy Captain Joe Johns here from Orange County were out to speak at that. There was a lot of patriots out there. I know we didn't do anything in Villa Park, but there were a lot of events that took place all around us, and I think that that should be pointed out. The next day on September 12th, I went to the Association of California Cities, Orange County Meeting, because I realized no one here was, was gonna make it, and I thought it was important for us to go. The topic was realities of realignment. Wow, wow, what an eye-opening briefing that was. Obviously Sheriff Hutchins was there. She looked well, and it's good to see her looking well. She was talking about normally, normally her, you know what realignment is. It's, it's the state pushing down to the county and city levels those prisoners because of, they have overcrowding issues. They're pushing the problems down, down here with us, and the courts are basically saying, "Hey, you can't have overcrowded prisons." And, and they're, you know, this is one time where I've actually been supportive of what Governor Brown has tried to do, saying, "And you can't do this to us," you know, forcing early release. But it was instituted in October 1st, 2011, realignment, AB 109, for those of you who care. And the sheriff, one of the things she said, that normally her prison has about an average of 4,700 prisoners on any given day. She was sitting that past weekend at 7,000 prisoners. That's how it's impacted our county prison system. That is huge, and 85% of them are felons. We're not talking about, you know, somebody that, you know, stole an iPhone from the kids locker. We're talking about some, some bad, bad guys. They were also talking about, you know, how their, their complaints are lack of decent medical facilities. They've toured those medical facilities. Professionals have come in and looked at the medical facilities that are provided, and they are better than what most average Americans have access to right now. And yet our prisoners are being treated like, like kings and queens, and that, and they complain about it. A lot of this now is pushing folks out into the probation system, uh, and a lot of that has to do with costs. With, with electronic monitoring, it costs $4 a day. Housing a prisoner costs $140 a day, so it all comes down to a numbers game. How do you make this happen? The next speaker was with the Probation Department of Orange County, and this was another one of the shockers for me. There are 8,000 children in the probation system in Orange County. That is a lot, and another 14,000 adults in Orange County. That, those were numbers. The kids, the kids in particular are really shocking to me. But when they hit a certain level, what they're, what they're, uh, those that won't be released, the, those that will be released would be non, non, what they call non, non, non. You'll hear this, you'll start hearing this a lot. I hope I'm getting this stuff right, Lieutenant Gunzel. Those are non-serious, non-violent, non-sexual offenders. Those are the ones that are being put out into the probation system. But the following speaker was a guy from Garden Grove. He was the Chief of Police Services out there, and he brought with him four binders that were all this thick, that had the wrap sheets, if you will, I guess, on two, there are 250 brand-new residents to Garden Grove. 250 in those four binders. That's, that's how significant. And he read three of the most egregious just to give us a feel for the kind of people who are being released into our communities. We are not in Orange County currently in as bad a shape as many other counties. Fresno County, for instance, for every one person that they book into the prison system, they have to let one go. That is how tight it is there. We are not to that point now, but they are really in a, a situation where they are having to be very creative with what they do and how they deal with it. One of the things that they're doing is training more probation officers. I guess there are four of them that are currently at the academy. This was a very valuable briefing. I don't think it was taped, but I'm, I'm glad I went because I think it's gonna be something that does impact us. Garden Grove, they can't say specifically that it was tied to the realignment, but they saw an 8% increase in crime in 2011 and a 16% increase in crime in 2012. We've, I feel, in Villa Park, even though it's low, we have a zero tolerance level for crime. We've seen an uptick. You know, we've gone years, and Brad, you'll remember that. We've had like zero, and we're seeing, you know, I guess some cities would say three or four is not much, or five. For us, that's a lot. And so I think we, we need to be even more on guard for what's happening. Um, as I close out this briefing, and I, like I said, I'm glad I attended. That was one of the best events that I think that they've held in a long time. In our work plan that we passed as a council, we, under the area where we're talking about maintaining a safe community, one of our goals was to invite the sheriff to come to visit with us at least once a year, and we have never done it. So, she's, I think part of it is, we all know that she was battling cancer. She looks great. She's out there, you know, doing her thing, and I think it gives her pleasure to be invited. I would suggest and ask that we figure out how to make that happen soon so that she can share some of this with us personally, and that we can also finally fulfill something that we've had on our own work plan for three years and have never acted on. Let's see, the last thing on...
At once.
I wanna brief, I wanna brief on this real quickly. I don't know how many of you are familiar with AB 1266 that was passed by, or was signed into law by the governor, I guess, about seven or eight weeks ago. That is what's being called the Gender Neutral Bathroom Bill, which essentially mandates that all public schools K through 12 will allow students of whichever sex to self-identify their gender identification. And then they are required, the schools are required, to allow that student to go into the bathroom, locker room, shower room, or join the sports team of whichever gender they identify with, no matter how it makes the other students feel. And, and they can even compete for, you know, scholarships based on the opposite gender, regardless of what their gender is on their birth certificate or how they were enrolled in the school. The, there is a large-scale effort to qualify an initiative for the ballot. There are many residents in this community that are out there working on that. The Central Committee of Republican Party of Orange County unanimously voted to oppose AB 1266 and to support protecting children, and they are supporting the effort to qualify this initiative on the ballot to repeal it, primarily because it's a mandate without any, it's a one-size-fits-all for the whole state, and it doesn't allow for individual school districts or individual schools to figure out how to best deal with that. And, and I think that, you know, if anybody's interested, I certainly have petitions that are available if you'd like to collect them yourself or you would like more information on that. And that's all my briefings. Thank you very much for the time.
I have a question for you, Debra, on that 1266.
Yes.
Can they switch as often as possible, too, I believe?
See, that's the problem. They didn't lay, they, they didn't lay these things out. That's where the problems are. They, it was not well thought out. It, it, you know, and it's just a matter of time before some teenage boy decides it would be brilliant to self-identify as a girl that day, to go into the girls' locker room, and there's nothing by law that the principal can't deny it, you know? And this is why the problems are there. That's why this is so concerning, is it doesn't say you don't get to switch back and forth as it pleases you. You don't get to be one thing one day and something else the next. And, and the other issue is for the other 99.99% of the students who would feel uncomfortable with having to share locker rooms with someone who is essentially of the opposite sex. It disregards their rights entirely. So I'm, I'm hoping that this community, and I believe this community will get behind it. Polling says that if this qualifies, it will pass because there are, there's a lot of issues with this particular law. Thank you.
On that little item there at Rotary, I happened to bring that up to Ed Howard, 'cause I was interested in that as well, and Ed indicated that Brown has not voted on it. That the Senator of the House, they recommended to him to do it, but he held back and didn't vote on it. I just asked him Thursday.
Oh, no.
He signed it.
No, he signed it.
That just happened recently.
He signed it.
Oh, he signed it.
Six or seven weeks ago.
It's been a while. It's signed.
I asked him, "What's OUSD doing about it?" And he says, um, they're talking, if it goes through, they're talking about adding a third bathroom. But he says there's no way they're going in the locker rooms or none of that, and, 'cause I, this is crazy. It's like, it doesn't even pass the smell test.
Well, I, I know the city of Gilbert, Arizona is now putting in the third bathrooms.
Yeah, that's, that's what's gonna end up happening, a third bathroom.
And, and the thing is, is they don't, they don't provide for that. There are private schools that already have those kinds of things in place, but the way this thing was written, it doesn't allow for individual schools or school districts to figure out how to best deal with it.
Yep.
Anyway.
All right, let's move on. On 8/28, I had an Orange County Sanitation District meeting. They have new management there with Jim Herberg at the helm. We're working on a five-year strategic plan, which is taking months to go through, and that's, that's really the, the big news down there. Everything's going well down there. On 9/19, I attended a meeting with Deanna and Jared with Serrano Water to meet their new general manager, Jerry Veylander, so I'll let Deanna mention more about that. Rick?
I'm gonna just break this up a little bit. What's this red button for?
Oh, it used to be when, uh... Part of the old equipment. It used to turn your microphone on and off.
Was it old on and off, but we had a discussion here, and no one knew what this was, so I...
That's what it used to be.
Yeah.
This is not an eject button?
I'm outta here. I was saying, if that, if that were the case, I'd need to push it myself, yeah. You know, I, I don't really have, the only thing I've got to report on would be, would be the fire authority issues, and frankly, that's gotten so extensive that I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, other than just to let the board know what's going on since it affects them. We're in, we're in the midst of contract negotiations. We are also, the city of Irvine brings in about $60 million a year to the fire authority, which is probably double what it costs to service the city of Irvine, is my guess. which is probably double what it costs to service the city of Irvine, is my guess. They're not very happy about that. They'd like to get some of that money back. They've threatened to break away, do their own department. OCFA has gotten rather nervous about that because it would seriously undermine their budget. It gets complicated because if they do that, the money doesn't necessarily go there, the county still controls it, but it's a big mess. They've negotiated for a while, and there's an item on calendar for this Thursday whereby OCFA wants to carve out money and start giving Irvine money back pursuant to this formula. And then there's contingencies. What if we can't pay it back? And it goes on and on. I'll just tell you that since I think this is almost a council-level decision, quite frankly, I'll throw it out there. I've talked to council, and I understand that I have the discretion probably, irrespective of the fact it seems like it affects the city and probably should be a council issue. One of the things proposed is that, that the cities sanction amendments to the joint powers agreement, which would authorize them to disburse additional monies to the city of Irvine. In contrast to other cities, they set up a formula, which they thought maybe was a way to get the money back whereby if you pay more than a certain percentage in taxes on your structural fire fund and your tax bill, above a certain percentage level, those cities get refunds. Irvine's the biggest one with the highest refund. So they offered to pay those five or six cities back a spread, the excess money, but the authority apparently didn't have the money to do that, so they tried to do it on a five-year phase-in. Well, city of Irvine apparently said, no, we don't want a five-year phase-in, we want it now. So now they're trying to figure out how to pay Irvine and ignore the rest of people in phase those in. They need a two-thirds vote of the cities.
Are you sure it's Irvine or is it just Jeff Lalloway? Is he their rep?
Yeah, he is their rep. Well, yeah, he is their rep. But anyway, be that as it may, that's going to come up for some attention Thursday evening.
What are you going to do?
And I'm just going to tell you where I'm going with it. There's no big secret. You know, my position is, and I made it clear, on behalf of the city of Villa Park, so it's going in there, is that this is all kicking the can issues. This is nothing more than trying to grease the city that's making the biggest stink and that's waving the, you know, the hatchet over their head. They don't have the money, as best I can tell, as evidenced by the fact they want to now give it to the city of Irvine and not pay the others and phase them in. And then if you read the JPA agreement, the deal with the city of Irvine, it has these contingencies, well, if we can't pay it when we get there, then we're going to do the follow, we're going to string it out some more. This is the same thing that's happening with payment of the pension liabilities. It's these unfunded liabilities, they just accrue, and they stack layer on layer, and they defer again and again, and every year, if the earnings aren't up or people live longer, they redo the actuarial studies, the deficit goes higher and can't pay it. So, to me, this is just another instance now of rebating money when we can't even pay our unfunded pension liabilities. It's just a, it's just a plug. It's a kick-the-can deal, put your finger in the dam to hold the pieces together because Irvine's threatening you. And my position is going to be that it's just that, that it's kicking the can.
So what's your vote going to be?
My vote's going to be against it.
Okay.
I don't want it because I think...
Good. You say, what about us? You cut us out of the deal. No. Just say that.
The bottom, that's not even, that's not even the biggest, my concern is that this is kicking the can, and, and we need to address the root cause, which is the pension underfunding. We need to bring the pension plans into a solvent, you know, financially responsible form where we can pay them in the future, people can count on the money, and we can pay it. Until we address that, I don't want to fool around with stuff like Irvine or anything else that involves these, these stick-your-finger-in-the-dike issues. So Villa Park's position with the OCFA, unless the council here wants to come and tell me I'm crazy, is going to be, we don't play any more kick-the-can on any issues until we address the core root problems with the agency. We don't play with these matters. I vote against it all. I mean, that's, that's...
Well, you are crazy, but I agree with you on this.
The Irvine number, is that like 5 million or something? Is that the number they...
The payment number?
Oh, and he wants more.
I mean, the rebate money.
The rebate starts this year at about 4.2 million, okay? Then it goes up, all right, and then, and then it phases in with four or five other cities over a five-year period.
It's just crazy.
Then, what happens is Irvine also has a 3.5% cap on it that doesn't apply to the others because they're afraid that the appreciation in all the new buildings they'll do and it'll push it up higher, so now they want to cap it, okay? And then you've got these, and then you've got these, these phase-in, if we can't pay it, then we treat it in this way. I mean, they're all, you can see in reading it, they're already contemplating, they're not going to be able to pay the numbers. It extends the city of Irvine to 2030 on their contract from, I think, 20, or they can't get out of it before 2030, and it requires about 134 million rebate back to the city of Irvine over that period, exclusive of the effect of the cap. And then when you add in the other cities as they phase in, it comes up to 184 million dollars.
Wow.
And this is to be paid from an agency that can't fund its pension plans to its members now.
Unless they change a formula, because we used to be a donor city, but now all of a sudden, we're not.
Yeah, now we're not a donor or city.
They change the formula.
Yeah, that's what makes me, that's what really made me angry, when I looked at that and I realized that they had gamed it so that suddenly we are...
Well, they did that on purpose.
Here's what they did.
I know they did.
They used to do it on a cost, I think they looked at it on a cost basis and said, hey, if you're paying more than, than the services for your area or donor city. But now I think they realize that was a problem, so now what they've done is now they look at the rates, and they've decided if you pay more than this tax rate, then the differential should be refundable.
Rick, how do you see the vote going? Can you read the board?
I don't have any idea how the vote's going to go. I was lobbied on it, and while I'm sympathetic, some of the executive staff, you know, while I'm sympathetic and I understand their perception that pulling the plug on this will be a big detriment, okay, and I see their point, you just can't keep sticking your finger in the dike. This is not the problem. This takes money away when we don't have enough money.
Yeah.
You know, we have to address the issue of balancing the budget, and once we get that done, then we can come back and address these issues. I think Irvine's got a point, you know, and so do the other cities.
They do. I bet they do.
But you know what? We need to balance the budget and get this on a stable footing because the way it's going, not only is it going to, is it going to bust the local cities and essentially bust the OCFA first and probably shove it into a chapter nine, but the, you know, the fire staff that's got the pension plans, and they're overly rich, they're probably unreasonably rich, and we can't even afford to pay them. But nonetheless, they got them, and the way it's going, I don't know how they're going to rely on them. I've already talked to some school teachers who've told me that their boards and management have told them, don't expect to get this stuff when the time comes.
With the teachers?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, have you seen the reports on CalSTRS? It's like off the charts.
Yeah, OSERS is the same way.
Same boogie.
Yeah, I mean, so the bottom line is, they got to get a handle on it, and then frankly, I can tell you in a couple of seconds how my suggestion's going to be. We have to end the defined benefit plans. To the extent that they're vested plans, that may not be too workable. We may have to live with what people have accrued so far, but the rest of it needs to be defined contributions so that we know what it costs, we set the money aside, it'll save a ton of money, and we can take some of that savings, and we can probably then turn around and use it to fund these defined benefit plans to the extent they're already vested.
And beyond that, outlaw the idea of being able to do something retroactively because a large measure of some of these problems were caused by the retroactive nature of those changes. How can anybody, that just isn't...
That's state, that's state level, though, Debra.
No, this happened in the county.
Where the supervisors.
It happened in the county.
Oh, no, no, I understand that.
No.
But that law should be passed on a statewide basis.
You're absolutely right. Somebody needs to go, that needs to happen at the state level.
Right, right. It needs to be done at the state level.
Yep.
I'm trying to deal...
But you know what? Quite frankly, what you're talking about has been and should have been dealt with at the state level, and every time somebody comes up with a workable solution, somebody sues and the courts undo it.
Right.
Well, you know, and they're going to keep doing that right up until the point where the whole ball, you know, bursts, and nobody gets anything, then, then you're really going to sue the jury.
Apparently OCFA, as I understand it, has a little more flexibility than Villa Park does, for example, on, on extricating itself from some of the defined benefit stuff. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. I don't know where this will go, but that's, that's going to be, Villa Park's position is going to be, no more finger in the dike. You address the core problem. Once that's addressed, we'll consider all these other issues, but until that happens, don't look at us, we're not, we're not going to do it. And I'm not going to, I can tell you right now, I'm not going to vote for any union contract that has a defined benefit plan continuing. I think it's a breach of fiduciary duty. I don't, it's an open ticket. There is no way to budget it. You have no way to know what that plan will cost, and I'm not going to vote to spend taxpayer money on a plan that's an open check that no one knows what it costs. I think it's a breach of your duty as a, as an elected official and as a director.
Well, I'm really happy to hear you say that because what I see the biggest problem is that these, that these problems, they, they're claiming they're going to get 8%, 9%, 10% return on this money, and they're getting one, maybe 1% now, and it's been going on for a long time. So...
And that's only part of the problem.
It's all smoke and mirrors.
That's only part of the problem, Greg. The life expectancies, if you read some of the moving forward data, life expectancies, though they may not, they're going up, but they're talking in the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years, going up like this, okay? To the point where by the time a 25-year-old kid retires 30 or 35 years from now, and then lives another 40 or 40 years after that, you're talking 75, 80 years from now, that kid may not go. The technology may be so advanced, and I've got some, some significant, basically some geniuses that have written articles on it. And so how do you assure someone you're going to pay them their full salary when they retire with COLA increases for the rest of their life?
It's absurd.
There's no way you can, there's no way you can do it. We don't know when the lives could end. So it's not doing anybody a service. It's a joke to tell them we can pay it, and they rely on it because they think the government's going to stand behind it, and it's not fair to the taxpayer, and you can't sign an open ticket with somebody's money. So I can tell you, unless somebody else wants his job, that's Villa Park's position.
Go for it.
Lovely.
Yeah, I mean, it's not pleasant, and I don't like going in with it, but I don't even like talking about it here in front of our own members, but, you know, that's, that's the practical reality. And I've talked to a number of the guys, and one-on-one, virtually everybody I've talked to has shaken their head and said, I know. But then when it comes back to the organized group and the union situation, we're back to, you know, we're just back to status quo. So I don't know if we'll do anything, but that's going to be our position.
Depends how they stack it up.
All right, so there's my report.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Deanna.
All right. Started on August 29th, as part of the Public Utilities Committee, I went and listened to Mr. Darryl Johnson speak. He's the new CEO of OCTA. And he spoke for about 30 minutes, very good conversation, less, basically what he told us was what they were doing with their Mezzanine money for the next decade. What I'd like to bring back to the city, which I'm taking back to the foundation, is that with OCTA, there are benefits that our residents can use. One of them, and tying in with the aging population, is that they do have an access system for some of our residents who can no longer drive or are getting to the point where they can't drive anymore, for a very small amount of money, we're talking about $3 a ride, they will come to your house, they will pick you up, they will take you to the doctors. You call them? Yeah, they will take you to the market, they will take you to visit, to visit those little van things. I know that program works very well. I'm quite versed in it in LA County as well as here, because I did have an elderly aunt who used it for 10 years, and when she became blind and even in a wheelchair, they would pick her up, and they would take her to church, and they'd pick her back up. So that's something I'm bringing through to the foundation. Then on September 5th, as Debra mentioned, we did listen to Lisa Jenkins, which is the Council on Aging. Had I known about this woman, she would have saved me two years' worth of heck, for lack of a better word. We could have her come speak to our residents. If we have residents who don't know which Medicare plan that they need to pick, okay, coming up in October, you can make an appointment, sit down with them, and they will go through every plan with them, based on their prescriptions, based on their illnesses, based on where they live, and tell them what would be the best plan for them to do. You can make an appointment with them to go over what nursing facilities are available based on the income of your elderly mother, and whether or not she qualifies for benefits. This service is something that is absolutely wonderful. They have people that will come visit our resident who doesn't have any family and lives in the house with the pool that's empty because they don't have anybody to, to clean it. They will come, they'll bring them meals, they'll come, they'll talk to them for an hour and make sure that they're okay. So I'm going to take this to the foundation and see if we can get an event to have her come speak and educate.
We definitely need a special event.
Do they clean pools?
Well, they won't clean pools, but you know what? They can find somebody to clean the pool for you. They will assist you.
What a great statement.
We definitely need a special event on this one.
Yeah, it was, she was phenomenal. I walked away, I just wanted to hug her, like, where were you?
Wow.
For me, because it's very, very difficult. All right, the next thing is with the foundation, we had a, another meeting. I have to say, I'm impressed with the people that are turning out. The board of directors are coming to the foundation meetings lately. We've had a quorum, we've had more people coming. They're working very hard to get new volunteers. We have the dog event coming up, and for those residents who are watching me out there, if there's anyone out there who had a brick installed and there's an error on it and you have not contacted me, please contact me in the next two weeks because we are trying to fix any errors that have, may have occurred in the inscription. So please contact me. Went to the Serrano Water Board meeting on September 10th. As you spoke, we met the new general manager, separately, we had some breakfast with him, very nice gentleman, not much more to be said there. City Schools Advisory Committee, the meeting lasted seven minutes.
This was the larger...
Yes, at the larger, went to the district...
They never accomplish...
Seven minutes. There were three people in the audience.
Was there an agenda?
There was, and there was an agenda, and Mr. Whitaker from the Orange City Council was primarily the, the one thing that we talked about, which was very good, quite frankly. I have our Villa Park School Committee meeting here on the 7th, and the transgender bill that was passed is on my agenda for whoever shows up from there because I want to know how the local schools are going to handle that.
Well, no, if we can get this initiative qualified, it doesn't go into effect until January.
Yes.
So if we can get this qualified by November, which is, they have, they have until November to get a half a million signatures, then that would put a stay on it until it could go before the voters.
Which would be wonderful.
Yes, it would.
Yeah, it has to go for the voters, definitely.
Yeah. Now, as far as the schools go, just to give you a little bit of an update, as of today, I did call all of the principals, the enrollment is 4,860 students in our schools as of now. So to break that down, Villa Park Elementary has almost 700 children, Saravilla, 1103, Serrano, 592, and Villa Park High School, approximately 2,500 students. That adds to some of the problems that we've had lately, then I know that the sheriff is aware of it, we've had some traffic issues over and around center. Villa Park Elementary, we have residents complaining about the cars, the amount of people coming into a very small area, and I've been working with our SRO and the principals and making, trying to make some changes so that we can ease the burden on the streets right now. And as far as that goes, that's it.
I have, I left one issue out, since you guys all sit on the councils, make you aware of it, because it stirred a little controversy, I think. I made a, I moved to put an agenda item on calendar for Thursday requesting that the fire authority obtain an independent evaluation or an independent study to determine what the market cost would be to replace fire staff, to hire competent fire staff. Apparently, it's never been done. They've priced it with other fire departments, but since they don't hire from other fire departments, and since we're going in negotiations, it seemed appropriate to get a baseline and say, what is the comp level that would be necessary to get people? And that's met a little, a little...
Resistance?
Yeah, and, you know, and frankly, I just tell you, there's a couple, three issues being raised. One of them is that we will get, quote, tainted results because people want to be firemen and therefore they'll work for a low amount of money, and it may be horrendously less than is being paid. Another one was that by doing that, we'll get, we'll spend money for training in the academy, and then we'll have attrition because other agencies will steal our people after we train them. I'm trying to think what the other one was, but, you know, I mean, those are both easily resolvable. One of them is you just train a couple extra guys if you think you're going to have an attrition. The class really doesn't cost you anything to speak of, and then you can fill the gap. And the, and the other one on the, on the tainted compensation, you know, it's market, it's not tainted, it's just market compensation, but it seems to me that the board ought to have that information, at least so that they know where they're coming from when they have discussions. I doubt there's anybody on that board's going to try and come in and strip down the, the fire compensation. I don't have any desire to do that, but it just seemed appropriate that if you're going to negotiate a contract, you ought to know what your cost of labor in the real market is. So, anyway, with that said, if you get any rumble about Villa Park, that's what it is.
Great, thanks, Rick. Jared, do we have a report from the Villa Park team tonight?
Yes, thank you for sharing. Councilman Mills already touched on it, but I'd like to welcome Tyler to the city. Tyler's going to be our new full-time associate planner, assistant planner, coenforcement officer.
Welcome, Tyler.
I also spoke about Amanda Worsham. She's our new intern from BYU. She's going back for her master's program, and will, will be with us for about a year, I believe a year, while her husband's applying to law schools. Closest one is either Stanford or Chicago, so we won't have her for, for too long. Bravo signs, as we mentioned earlier, starting construction tomorrow at Taft in Santiago. And on October 24th at 4:00 PM, I've arranged for a semi-town hall meeting with Kinder Morgan and Southern California Gas Company. Gas lines, high-pressure gas lines throughout the community have always been, always been a hot topic around here. It's always been on Councilwoman Polly's plate. And then with November or September being National Preparedness Month, we, I dusted off our old emergency operations plan that was put together in '09, and realized, "It doesn't even mention high-pressure gas lines in here." Folks have always had questions about the gas lines, and, and I'm not part of Kinder Morgan or the gas company. So, we really were unable to answer them satisfactorily. And we've always come out with frequently asked questions and directed them to the website. Well, now, we're actually gonna bring them in here and have live bodies who are, who are able to answer those FAQs.
Is this natural gas or high-pressure petroleum?
It's a high-pressure petroleum gas line. It originates over by...
So, it's liquefied, right?
Yeah.
It's a huge issue.
Gasoline.
It originates by the movie theaters, Century 25 on Cotella in Maine. Comes down Cotella, and it turns down Wanda. And then from there, it shoots all the way down to San Diego. Sorry, I drew a blank.
Doesn't it come from Fort Worth? Comes up Cotella, it turns, goes this way on Wanda?
Down the railroad?
All the way to...
It basically follows the railroad. They're, they're all throughout Southern California. And they don't really publicize the maps, just for, you know, potential terrorist attacks. But it's high-pressure aviation fuel, diesel fuel, just regular gasoline.
So, there's multiple lines with all those different fuels?
One line, and then they have valves to close it.
There's a major one along the out, right, the outside boundary of our city.
Yep.
And we've never had an adequate answer as to how they are inspected, and how frequently, and how. Not a helicopter flying along and saying, "Hey, it looks great." You know, how's it done? And, and what are... And you had also further realized that you have no emergency plan, actually, in, in our books. So, he's working with them. I, I wanted to thank Jared, because we've been trying for some time to get some straightforward answers, to get a live body here, to brief the community, where the community members can ask questions. And finally, you know, Jared, Jared did that for us. I don't know how many of you saw just, just last week in the paper, Pacific Gas and Electric has to pay $565 million in a legal settlement for an explosion of a high-pressure transmission line that blew up on September 9th, 2010.
San Bruno.
Yep, San Bruno.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and it's a hu, that's part of what sparked, I hate to use that word, our interest in it. But also, Laura Pierce's book, "Craziphornia," because there's definitely some questions about people putting these things in, knowing full and well that things were not done properly, and just deciding to brush it under the rug, and leaving many, many hundreds of people vulnerable all along the way. So, we need to have some direct answers. Thank you, Jared. So, that's gonna be at 4 o'clock.
Yeah, October 24th at 4:00. And beginning this week, next week, we'll start putting in the ENET, so we can hopefully...
So, they have multiple, they actually have multiple lines down there. They got jet fuel, they got fu, car fuel, they got different lines.
It's, from what I understand, it's one line.
It's one line without...
We can get all that, we can get all that answered on that day, and I'm thankful.
They can purge and put different kinds of fuels through, typically.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
So, they clear it, and then run another one through it. One more question. What, what was the cost on the wall then? What did it cost us with Bravo to get that wall done on Taft and...
Oh, it was, I don't...
Santiago.
We, we budgeted $27,000. Some was for contingency, some was for landscaping. I think the wall itself was $21,000, $22,000, somewhere around there. I don't remember. I can pull it out. That was from the last meeting.
Not too much different than our other walls.
No, it's, it's the same turnkey price.
Yeah, it's the same.
Oh, it's basically the same?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
Same, similar amount of work and...
Same, everything. Same material, same graffiti sealant, same...
We haven't waited, we haven't spent much time, so it's kind of all been the same materials and everything.
The other ones who are building planters and everything. This thing's just gonna be a little cut in the sidewalk, and then, and then face the wall, right? It's funny, I would've thought that would've been last.
No, same thing. It's the same cost as Villa Park Road and Wanda. The, the sign on lemon was a little bit more, because we actually resurfaced the rear wall.
Right.
And we, we...
Of course, the other ones had to build the wall, too.
We had to build the wall to fill it in, yeah.
On over here.
Yeah.
Okay. How long is it supposed to take?
Oh, they crank it out a couple of weeks at most.
A couple of weeks, yeah, that's what I figured. All right.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Tonight, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of my mother-in-law, who passed a few days back. You know how you hear things about mother-in-laws, that there's issues with them and all? I really loved my mother-in-law. She was a great, great lady. And I'll miss her, miss her dearly. Our next meeting is gonna be October 22nd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you and good evening.